Okay, morning, everyone. I just got the thumbs up. Looks like we're good to go. This morning, we got a few things to go through. We got a couple of people here with us, but we were a little slow getting faces on the screen. We're still missing councillor Kellam. But other than that, we're good. Anyway, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And first, we'll start with a moment of reflection. Okay, thank you. At this point, you can declare a disclosure of pecuniary interest, or you can do it at any point in time through the meeting should one come up. And what we're going to do now is I need a motion to confirm the agenda. But I do have an addition to add, and that would be item 9.2. And that is appointment of CEMC David Clark. And that is the only addition I have to that. If somebody would like to move that we approved the agenda as amended, that would be great. Councillor Casenberg, councillor Mackenzie. Any questions? Not seen. Oh, no. Those in favor? It's carried. Thank you very much. So I did mention, oh, and I forgot to mention, we are live streaming here, just so you're aware. Just a reminder. And now that we've added the appointment of David Clark as our new CEMC, I do have him in the room here. So I'm just going to give you a quick little bio. A couple of you have already heard it, but the rest of you haven't. And I want to welcome David to the County of Perth. We had a meeting yesterday morning. It went very well. So just a little bit about David. He's got significant experience, expertise in emergency management, incident and hazard management. He's joining Perth County from his most recent role as working with Fire Emergency Service Training Institute with Toronto Pearson Fire and Emergency Services in Toronto. He's dedicated to emergency service. He's worked as a paramedic in land and air ambulance, worked as a police officer, and worked as a fire chief. So his role as CEMC is to lead the emergency preparedness program for the five municipalities, that being Perth County and the four lower tiers. And the pandemic required increased need for coordination across multiple disciplines and reporting between regional emergency control group meetings across municipalities to share vital information about health and safety of our communities. And I'm more than positive, we got the right person to do that job after my meeting yesterday. So David Clark, our new CEMC, and I think we're going to zoom the camera over to him, and he's going to say a couple of things before we go any further. Can you just zoom that over to David, please? That's instead of me, people, people moving around, we're moving the camera. Just takes a second here. And there he goes. We got him.
Thank you very much, Warden. And Deputy Warden, we met yesterday, and to all the council members. I'm extremely happy to be here in Perth County and just south of the county in Woodstock, Ontario, where I live with my wife. And apparently, once your kids leave the home, they do come back. So our two girls due to COVID. So my wife is the reason for us being here. She is the CEO of Ronald McDonald Charities for Southwestern Ontario. So that takes her to London and Windsor and this whole catchment area. And that's how we came to be here. We started years ago out in Guelph, Ontario. We first got married when I was working for one of the regional police, and she has sick kids in Toronto. So just one amendment to the wardens' comments. Never was a fire chief. Captain was my, my, my highest rank, but the chief was too much paperwork. So, and I'm sure Mike can attest to that. But I've had a chance to sort of get my feet wet and meet a few people around the region here in, in the county. And I'm very impressed with what's, what's here and people's capabilities and their their willingness to move forward with things and do stuff. I'm here to support, you know, the county and the lower tiers and to do some heavy lifting on, on things like exercises and coordinate some of those things and make sure we're compliant. But I think that there's, from what I've seen, an excellent base to jump off from. I had the opportunity to meet the chief there and a couple of the fire chiefs and deputies in the area. And we'll continue on, and I'll be sending out meeting requests to the mayors and CAOs of the, the lower tiers to just have a meet and greet with them. And then hopefully, once we're out of the stay-at-home order, I can get around as well, face to face with the fire chiefs and policing in the area, with both the OPP and Stratford Police as well, and go from there. So thank you very much. Everybody's been very welcoming and positive first week. Gloria's been awesome in supporting everything that I'm doing, and I'm really glad to be on this team and see where we can take things. So thank you.
Okay, thanks, David. We're going to move on here. Next, we have consent agenda. So I have, and it's a fairly large number, items 5.1 to 5.24. And the minutes from the April 15th council meeting. Does anyone want to see anything pulled or discussed? Councillor Hurley?
5.11.
5.11?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay, and I see Matt Duncan. You're muted, Matt.
5.16, please.
Okay, I gotta keep circle these as I go, because sometimes we get so many, I miss one of them. Okay, councillor Mackenzie.
Yes, and Matt got the one of the ones that I had. I also had 5.23, the letter from Federation of Agriculture.
Okay, we can deal with them right now, or we can move them further down the agenda. What's your wishes? Councillor Hurley?
I think we can deal with it pretty quick.
Okay, you had the first one. 5.11.
Yeah, with regards to opening golf again here in Ontario, I mean, yeah, it's, it's no secret or anything, these restrictions certainly are systematically crippling and bankrupting the economy and independent business daily. We all know physical activity is good for everybody. Our youth are suffering. I believe they talk in there as well, how our children are suffering. I mean, that's something I would make this season important. Thank you.
Other comments? Councillor Mackenzie?
Okay, I, I don't look at it. Well, I guess you could call it a no-brainer if you want, but I'm certainly not in favor of this at this time. As was said on the call last week with Premier Ford, playing golf isn't a problem. You can be distanced and you can wear a mask and everything else. But it's what happens before you get there and what happens after you leave. And there was an incident on the news the other night, I believe it was Tuesday night or Monday night, where they had traveled from Kitchener to the golf course in Tilsenburg. And then they were fined 800 and whatever it was, $880 or whatever. And they interviewed the guy, and there he is in the car with a buddy from Kitchener. So like, that's where the problem is. It's not the golf, it's getting there. So like, I could not support this.
Other comments? Councillor Hurley, one more time?
I'll just finish off, I guess. I'll just finish off this way. What we've seen with the lockdowns. Small businesses, we've watched thousands of people. It's interesting. Hey, it's weight roles. I, health is a big thing for me and child activity. And I don't know. We can't even go from household to household, so.
Okay, don't see any more hands up for comments. Does anyone wish to support that resolution? I see no hands, so that means no. Okay, we're moving on to the next one, 5.16, and that would be councillor Duncan.
Yeah, thanks, Warden. I just, I'd like to support this initiative from the township of the Archipalego, because the fragmites is starting to become a bigger problem all throughout Ontario. And a lot of it is moved through the construction industry with unclean equipment. So like, even in Perth County, there's starting to be numerous patches showing up on our roadsides in Perth County. And I think we need to create some sort of a plan to deal with these fragmites, because it's an extremely fast-moving invasive species. And I think now's the time before it gets a big foothold here, like it has in other areas of the province.
Okay, and I know councillor Mackenzie mentioned it. Do you want to speak to that, too?
Well, no, I'll speak, yeah. We have, it's an issue in West Perth, and we've hired a company to spray throughout West Perth. But it's all, it's also through the county and that. So I think we have to, and on the provincial highways. So I think we need to support this and, and take action on it.
Other comments? Councillor Hurley?
No, for sure. Matt, just clear up there, you're familiar with this. It's a pretty choking invasive weed, is it? You'll know more. Just, I'm a little hesitant.
Now, it, it takes right over and chokes all, any native plant that's in the area. It'll choke it right out and completely take over the, the ecosystem in the area. There's other areas in the province where they've got huge problems with it now, and it's become very costly to try and, to try and manage. And particularly when it gets into a wetland, because there's only a limited number of companies that can spray over water to control it, when it gets into the wetland areas.
Other comments? Okay, I know we've got it in Perth South to start it. It seems to be, though, started along the waterways, but it's already, it is way worse to us. More to the west of us, I know that. But it's, it's there, it's coming here, and it already is here, and then it's going further north or east. So how would you like to deal with that? I've got a couple of options here. Can we do a letter of support for that? Archipalego Road Management Motion, but could we also refer this to our weed inspector Marvin Smith to deal with it? Would you be happy with that, to do with forward on correspondence as well to the province? I see a few heads nodding up and down. Councillor Duncan?
Willing to make that a motion.
Okay, so you make a motion to support this and also to refer to Marvin Smith for further correspondence?
Correct.
So that's the motion to move. And do I have a second or? That would be councillor Casenberg. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Carried. Perfect. 5.23. Walter?
Okay, I, I think we, we pull this one and we respond. I would suggest that we give it to, to John McClellan. And possibly even one step further, the area road managers or operations managers. So they meet, I think, on a monthly basis. And let's let them kind of respond, or they can even give us a copy, I guess, back of what they're going to say. But that would be probably the proper way to, to respond to that inquiry from the Federation.
Okay. So I have had discussions with John McClellan on this, and he's going to come on here and speak to it. The plan at this point is for the county and the four lower tiers to have a joint response back. But I'm going to have John speak to it, because there was a couple of things he and I discussed that we might want to include in that correspondence back. And John, you're here. Take it away.
Yes, thank you, Warden Herson. Good morning, council. This letter from the Perth County Federation of Agriculture was circulated to all public works leads at the county and at the local municipalities. We have had the opportunity to discuss this matter at our monthly Public Works meeting in April. And our intention is to provide a joint response to the Perth County Federation of Agriculture. If council is agreeable, you can direct staff to provide that joint response, and the county can initiate that on everyone's behalf. Thanks.
Okay, does anybody have an issue with that? So there was, in my discussions with John McClellan, some of the services they mentioned was roadside cutting and a few different things. So I'm going to bring this up. One of our biggest problems is cropping road allowance. And would you like to see something in that response back that refers to that issue we're having with the farmers cropping the road allowance? Because that is where we're doing a lot of our roadside cutting in some areas. And if you've got a field of corn on an intersection, that is your biggest stumbling block for visibility. Council's thought on that. Councillor Wilholt?
Yes, you just touched on a spot that I quite concerned is that the farmers do plant right up to the corner with corn, and, and you cannot see past it. And I've certainly encouraged our staff, if they come across that, just to cut it down and as far back as they can, because it is a real hazard.
Would anybody be offended if we included that in the letter back? Councillor Hurley?
No, I don't, I don't think so. Something you can do there, too, is your, your tax rollout for, in your local townships. Put a little notice in there, like, guys, you could be liable for this smart now.
Yeah, we've done that in Perth South for a number of years. It just doesn't seem to be getting everyone's attention. So we will have a joint, can I have a motion for a joint response back to the OFA from the upper and four lower tiers? Councillor McDermott, you're moving that? And a secondary would be councillor Wilholt. And do you want to see a copy of that response before it is circulated? Hands up if you want to see a copy of that before it's circulated. One, two, three, four. Okay, so John, you'll have to circulate that to everyone before we actually send it out.
Includes the corners.
Pardon me?
Includes the comments about the corners.
Yeah, we're gonna, hopefully, we'll include the comments about cropping road allowance. You could also include on there, hauling in half-load season. You could also include putting mud in the road, not cleaning it off. You, you guys can, as the roadspeople, come, come up with what you want. Anyway, so that will be forwarded to all of, everyone for luck before it goes. So I have a mover and a secondary. Those in favor? That's carried. Perfect. So back to the original portion here. Council receives a consent agenda, items 5.1 and 2.5.24, and approves the April 15th, 2021 council minutes. Moved by councillor Duncan, seconded by councillor McDermott. Comments or questions? Those in favor? It's carried. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have public meetings, hearings, and delegations. And we have Andrew Williams and Dr. Miriam Clausen on for a brief presentation. So if we can get them up here. We have Dr. Clausen. Oh, there's Andrew Williams over there. Perfect. Welcome, Andrew, and welcome, Dr. Clausen. You're up. I'm not sure which one's starting, but take it away.
Shall I start then, Andrew? And then, okay, thank you very much. So good morning, Warden and councillors. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to this motion today. And also thank you very much for caring about your community and striving to serve them to the best of your ability and for everything that you've done since the start of this pandemic. The facts about this pandemic, how the virus behaves, the significance of variants of concern, the benefits and risks of various vaccine formulations are complex and nuanced and will not be fully understood for many years to come. Equally, the effects of public health measures, including lockdown measures, will take years to fully comprehend. There is no doubt that, in addition to preventing COVID-19 illness and death, there are unintended adverse impacts. This has been acknowledged all along, and all along, there have been efforts to find the most appropriate balance between mitigating against infection and protecting socioeconomic health. COVID-19 is a novel pathogen, and the world has not experienced a COVID pandemic in known history. So decision-makers have been using what is known about pandemics in general, about viruses and infections in general. And then, as we learn it, information specific to COVID-19 to inform decisions. All science is incomplete. This is even more true in a rapidly evolving situation such as this COVID-19 pandemic, where it is necessary to make decisions with incomplete information. And then, as more information becomes available, decisions are updated accordingly. While this can be confusing and frustrating for the public, it is both honest and transparent, as well as the right thing to do, to adjust course to prevent further illness and death. While the risk of severe illness and death in children is lower than the risk to adults, and especially older adults, the risk is not zero. And with the increase in variants of concern, the risk has become higher. Additionally, while children may not spread COVID as readily as older people, they do transmit COVID infections and contribute to the propagation of the pandemic. In here on Perth, we have about the same number of cases in people aged 0 to 19, 202, as we've had in people 80 years and older, 212. And as a sad reminder, we've had over 8,000 deaths in Ontario, including 53 deaths in here on Perth, even with all the public health measures implemented since the start of the pandemic. A word about vaccines, which are widely considered to be the greatest public health achievement. From smallpox in the 1700s until now, vaccines have prevented untold numbers of illness, disabilities, and deaths. The rollout of the COVID-19 vaccine has been unprecedented for a number of reasons. Notably, the level of global cooperation that facilitated the ability to bring a vaccine to market so quickly. The vaccines are safe and effective. And in the interest of maintaining public trust through transparency, it is important to acknowledge and communicate the rare but real risks that have been identified. This is not an easy task. We humans are not adept at understanding and evaluating risk. Emotions play a larger role than factual information. The potential risks and benefits of using different vaccine formulations is an area of interest at this time. And we will continue to learn more information that will inform recommendations going forward. Ultimately, the decisions are about values. Ontario's response has aimed to prevent as many hospitalizations and deaths as possible and to try and mitigate against social and economic adverse impacts in other ways where possible, such as leveraging the Serb, facilitating IT for virtual connecting. I mean, this is not as good as the real thing. But these are measures that are, you know, it's not either or. These are, these are measures intended to address the adverse impacts. The situation in Ontario at this time is very precarious, with our hospital sector stretched to the limit. The VOCs transmit very easily, and we cannot erect a wall around here on Perth. And in fact, although we've been having, you know, among the lowest rates in Ontario through this entire so-called third wave, the last two days, we've had an incredible surge in here on Perth. So it just goes to show that we're, you know, until we're all safe, we're none of us safe. If the pandemic is not brought under control, then we're all at risk of COVID-19 infection and at risk of being unable to access hospital care if we need it, whether it's for COVID or some other illness. Hence, the need for the provincial lockdown at this time. And, you know, I've heard people say, why are vaccines sort of being more focused in one area, or why don't we just do the lockdown measures in one area? I mean, I would say, if the house is on fire and you're in the bedroom, and the, you know, the source of the fire and most of it is happening in the kitchen, you, you know, you direct your efforts at the kitchen, but it will ultimately save the bedroom. There is reason to believe that with vaccination, vaccination rates increasing and provincial rates leveling off, conditions will soon exist to allow for a successful and hopefully final easing of public health restrictions. But if we move too soon, cases could easily and quickly spiral out of control, as we've seen happen around the world. But thanks for allowing me to provide this update, and I'm happy to take any questions if anyone has any.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Clausen. And just before we take questions, I'll let doctor, or sorry, not doctor, Andrew Williams speak. Andrew?
Thanks very much. There's a lot of doctors that might not like the, I appreciate the opportunity to be here as well, and thank you for your leadership. And I do want to start by giving a huge shout out to Miriam and her team at Public Health. They've done an incredible job throughout the pandemic. You know, the strain and stress on, on their entire group has been significant, and we're closing in on a year and a half, as we all know. So we're, we're lucky to have that, her and the team in this, in this region. You know, obviously, you know, Dr. Clausen has shared, you know, a lot of the, the information that is important as we kind of look at our reality. And I think it's, you know, key to reinforce that no one likes where we are right now. I've not spoken to anybody that is happy that we're in a lockdown or is happy that we're having to deal with the restrictions that we are. But I can assure you that those of us who are in the health system right now really feel it is fundamentally important to make this, what I am confident is the last push to get, to get through this. You know, we, in our Stratford site, we have eight COVID patients today, six of whom are in our intensive care, or seven, sorry, in our intensive care unit, and six of those are from the GTA. And as you probably know, the reason, the main driving force behind the, the big push to lockdown this time has been the increasing pressures on our intensive care units. We're seeing younger people as a result of the variants. And we were very concerned that the trajectory of hospitalizations was going to overwhelm our system. We have 868 ICU admissions in the province today. It wasn't that long ago where we had half of that. So it was really key for us, we felt, to advocate. And I sit on the Ontario Hospital Association Board, and we wrote to the premier and said, you know, we need to lock down. We need to target vaccinations and get ahead of the hot zones. We need to do some societal things, such as sick leave, which is, you know, obviously a policy issue. But the long and the short of it is, as a health system, we know that as hard as this is, this is the absolute right call for us to make as a province. You know, I do believe, you know, as the vaccines, and we've got, we've done really well locally with our vaccination rates. You know, even though we're seeing some of that deviated now to the, the hot zones, that's going to be the major influencer of us getting back on track. And we're seeing the numbers in ICU flatline this week. You know, they peaked at around 890, and they're now slightly dropping. That's really, really positive. But we're not there yet. And as Miriam says, you know, we need to keep our foot on the gas. Because the worst thing we can do is, is go through the, the hell that we have. And I couldn't agree with those around the screen more when they've said that this has had a devastating impact. Because it has, it has on businesses, it has on lives, and we know that. But the worst thing we can do in memory of those impacted is to take our foot off the gas too soon. So we need to keep pushing over the next few weeks, and I'm confident that it is only going to be a few weeks before we really start to see the, the corner turn. So, you know, from a health perspective and from our team at the HPHA, can't thank our community enough. I mean, we have stepped up in any way possible, have done everything that's been asked of us. And it has meant a lot to, to us and has certainly helped us locally with the, the cases. But we are part of a bigger system. We need to recognize that, and we need to do our part, which we are obviously happy to do. So pass it back to, to council for questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. So questions for either Dr. Clausen or Andrew Williams from council? Councillor Hurley?
Oh, great. Thanks, Sarah. No, it's interesting times for sure. The PCR testing, you know, I don't want to look like an armchair, but that is the gold standard reason for testing in Canada, correct? And I just want to pick the two of yours brains, you know, there's countries, you know, they've abandoned the PCR testing. I believe Denmark was the latest, Portugal, a few others. Courts are full of it right now. The amplification are up to 38 to 40 cycles, which is in, into the tens of thousands of amplification looking for for a fragment, you know? My wife tested positive for COVID back, oh, in December. Her symptoms, which were, you know, a little bit of smell, were six weeks before. a little bit of smell were six weeks before and a sore throat. So they thought they should test her as she went in. And she tested positive and they're like, well, how long ago? And they're like, well, you'll be fine now. We're getting, there's no, not really. They told her straight up, like, make sure you don't get another PCR test for months or a year, you know? Because we don't know what we're cycling that and that can last in you for like, we're at the thirty-eight, forty cycles, amplification is into the, the thousands of thousands. It's doubling every cycle. So it's concerning, right? Is that, is that proper way of doing it? Considering there's countries abandoning it, making it in the courts. I don't know. It, it's scary, you know?
I, I'm gonna just stop you there and
I'm good.
Your actual question is or Miriam, do you want to, Dr. Claus, do you want to respond to what he said?
Just your thoughts on the PCR testing. I'm just given what I know personally firsthand and what the public health said.
Yeah, so um I, I don't know if it's just me, but the connection isn't, isn't great for me for hearing Counselor Hurley. But I think um what I was hearing was some questions around the, the limitations around the PCR test. And what I will tell you is that every single test, every single test that there is has false positives and false negatives and always needs to be interpreted uh it with a clinical context. And this is, you know, a pet peeve of, of physicians often and uh you know, in, in non-COVID times is people that want to have tests of certain things just for reassurance or to rule things out. And we, and you will hear us say always that it's not a good idea. Like you, you don't do a test unless you need it and you know what you're going to do with the result. So absolutely, does, does the PCR test uh have the ability for false positives and false negatives? Like every test, it does. Um and, and that's why there is good clinical testing guidance about, about how to interpret these results. And um absolutely, CTs above thirty, we, we look at with the, you know, a, a grain of salt um in Ontario. So um and, and you know, it, again, it depends on the clinical context. But is it a good test? And uh it's extremely sensitive. Um and in symptomatic people, it's, it's very helpful. And you know, when you look again at how a novel pathogen was found uh less than eighteen months ago and was sequenced and we were able to do a test and we were able to develop vaccine and so forth, there's very solid science behind it.
Other questions? Counselor Aggins.
So the question I have, and a lot of people have asked me this question. Um I know that the hospital systems are overwhelmed with the number of people in intensive care. And I guess people want to know why you moved those people out of Toronto. And I realize it's because they were, they were swamped. But if you use the farming analogy, if I had three barns of animals and one of them are sick, I don't move my sick animals to the two barns that are healthy. And I think people are really concerned why um people are being moved to other areas where it's not such a hotspot. Why didn't they um find a, a bigger facility to try to keep them in, say, Toronto or Kitchener or wherever the, the hotspots were?
Maybe I can start with that, that question. And it's a great question and, and you know, one that, that we're asked um, you know, quite a bit. And I think it, you know, you look at, at intensive care unit capacity and, and the, the type of beds that are required are intensive care unit beds that have ventilation capacity. So the ability to ventilate patients. And we have a finite number of those um in hospitals across the province and a finite uh number of staff who can support those beds. So the, the only way we could have prevented uh moving uh patients out of the GTA where they were overwhelmed. They had far more uh requirements for ventilated beds than they actually had beds. The only way we were prevented that would have been to take in all of the ventilated beds and the staff from all across the province and move them to the GTA. Um and we felt that would be far more disruptive. So you know, when you look at, at the intensive care unit at our Stratford site, um we started before the pandemic, we had six beds that we could vent patients on. We've now increased that to thirteen. We've done that by reducing surgery and we've reallocated our staff to uh the intensive care unit um to enable us to bring patients out. Um it's a capacity issue, quite frankly, and, and every ICU that's ventilated capacity that has that capacity um is expected to be able to look after the same types of patients. Um so it was far more effective for the system to move the patients to where the ICU beds were versus the other way uh around. Uh you know, and, and when we look at the process around that, I mean, it's very disruptive, as you can imagine, for everybody, right? I mean, the families who are uh moving and their loved ones are, are traveling hundreds of kilometers away. It's tough on them. Um it's tough on, on the teams in hospitals that have been redeployed. You know, we've taken OR nurses and they're now supporting intensive care unit patients. Uh so it's really hard on everybody, but it, it's the right decision in the context of where we are right now. Um we're going to see less transfers, I think, in the coming days and weeks. Because as the ICU numbers drop, the capacity in the GTA increases as it is everywhere. Uh but in that really tight timeframe of about four to five weeks ago, where we were overwhelming Toronto, it was the fairest and, and safest thing for us to, to do.
Hey, yeah, and if I could just build on that and say like, absolutely, in, in terms of of the premise of infection prevention control, your first choice would be to not move people. And, and that was the same situation when we decanted some of our uh long-term care facilities is here on, here on Perth. That was not our preferred choice. We tried to keep people uh where they were on site as long as we possibly could. Um but ultimately, when that uh started to in, impact the ability to provide the correct level of care, then we had to consider moving. And, and I know I, I spoke to, you know, a neighboring M W H and said, you know, we can set up beds. Um you, you know, like, like a field hospital kind of, you can put them all there, but it's still the staff are the issue. Every single ICU bed has a, a huge team of highly skilled staff. Um and, and that, you know, you, that's really the issue, not, not.
Okay, thank. Any other questions? Uh, Counselor Herd, do you have another question?
Yes, I do. You know what? I'll just you talk about the vaccine rollout there. So I read an article last night. Canada now just hit three percent of its population that is vaccinated now. And Alberta and Quebec in particular are really saying, you know, they have all these openings. They have the sites up and running and nobody's coming. There's lots of openings. So I'm just curious where they, they think the, the, the sweetheart number's going to be. You know, I, you know, people are hesitant. Um it's kind of frustrating at times, you know, you hear of the sour matches and countries pulling the manufacturers, right? Denmark, you know, pulling it right out of the country, a few of the, the two of the manufacturers. And also, look, I'm not anti-vax. I, I vaccinated and been involved with vaccines as much as anybody was. It's tough. It's tough.
Sound that there, Dr. Clausen?
Yeah, so, so um again, sorry for the, for the poor connection. Um you know, um i- if you're talking about fully vaccinated, then it's something like three percent. I, I, I don't know the exact number, but if you're looking at one vaccine, then the number is, is much higher, like more like forty percent, certainly in Ontario, over forty percent. Um and what we know is that, that, that does already create a very good immunity. Not as we want to catch up and get everyone their second dose eventually, but, but getting that first dose out first really raises the, the level of immunity. And we have seen that uh, you know, uh al- already um particularly uh in lo- in the long-term care home sector. Once we started getting one dose in, uh the, the outbreaks were, were uh, you know, not as devastating. And then once we got two doses in, even better. So um I, I think you were getting at, at what level would, would we reach sort of what, what's called herd immunity? Or when, when, when will um the level of, of vaccination permit uh a loosening of public health restrictions? And I think that will be a bit of a gradual thing, like over the summer, outdoor activities are, are like twenty-fold safer. So we're really hoping that uh in the summer, you're going to see a lot more activities permitted more in the outdoor setting. And then hopefully, when the weather turns, by that time, the level of immunity, either through infection or immunization, will be high enough to, to permit um uh you know, um a much more opening of indoor activities as well. Um yeah, that vaccine hesitancy is always um a, a challenge. What I can tell you is that in Huron Perth, um you know, it's been tremendous, our response. I just looked at our data, um our eighty pluses are at ninety-four point six percent, seventy-five to seventy-nine is ninety-one point nine percent, seventy to seventy-four, eighty, ninety-two point two percent, sixty-five to sixty-nine, eighty point five percent for one, for one vaccine. And odds are that the vast majority of those people are going to come back for their second. So um you know, we've been getting good coverage locally. Uh we're just going to keep uh working away at that. And, and already the long-term care home guidance allows more activities in a home. Um or it's signaling that it will, once the levels are low enough, where vaccination rates are high enough. So I think that will help motivate people as well when they see that being vaccinated is helping us to ease restrictions.
Okay, thanks. Um other questions? Well, I could always have one, you know that, Dr. Clausen. Um so we have got quite a few people done the first trip through. We've used a multitude of different vaccines, Pfizer, Moderna, AstraZeneca. So it now appears because of the horrible situation in India, the AstraZeneca vaccine might become a little bit more limited in supply. So the question now, and I know they started doing some studies on it. Can you mix and match? Because at this point in time, I'm telling people, if you got Moderna first, you get Moderna second. If you got Pfizer first, you get Pfizer second. So will you be able to mix and match sometime down the road or where do you think we're going on that? Because I do have people asking me.
Yeah, a, 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 almost certainly. I mean, there's, there's likely no harm coming from it. The question is more, will you get the preferred immune response? And what we know is that there is, there's also the possibility that you'll have an even better immune response by using two vaccines that approach the problem from slightly different ways. Um and certainly, we're getting lots and lots and lots of Pfizer. So even if someone started with AstraZeneca and for whatever reason is unable to complete the series, they have a certain level of immunity now, they could start a new series with uh Pfizer, you know, i- if it came to that. But um thi- this is an area of intense uh, you know, interest right now. And everyone is studying this and I, I'm sure we're going to continue to learn more about how the vaccines uh work together or uh impact uh, uh the immune system and additional recommendations will be coming out. And the other piece of this is, is that in, in all likelihood, this is going to be with us for a while, COVID nineteen, so people are going to need boosters. You know, this is probably going to become a routine childhood kind of vaccine. So uh this is going to become part of Ontario publicly funded uh immunization schedule, if you ask me.
Okay, thank you very much. Just thought I'd ask you, because I am getting the odd call about that and I'm sure you all will get calls about that before long. Um any other questions or comments? Counselor Wilhelm?
Yes, I guess, uh and you just touched on a bit there, Dr. Class. The um the government is recommending uh ages twelve and up now for uh getting your shots. Do you see that down the road, the schools will enforce that uh all children must be vaccinated? Um that was done way back with, many, many years ago. And do you see that happening again?
Yeah, so, so that's still like, there's the Immunization of School Pupils Act, which is upheld by uh public health, local public health units. Um so uh will that be, be at, will that antigen be added to the current act? I expect it will. Um to be clear, it's still, it, it there, it's still in Ontario, does allow for uh medical exemptions, obviously, as well as exemptions of conscience. Um but our, our rate of exemptions remains very, very low. But even if someone does um decide that they don't want to receive it for whatever reason, then public health, we have all that information. Were there an outbreak, we would immediately suspend that um student and so forth. So um I, I imagine at this point that it will become part of, you know, the, the school um schedule and the Immunization of School Pupils Act. But don't hold me to it, uh Council Wilhelm, in case the province goes a different direction in terms of how they roll that out. But I certainly think that's one possibility.
Any other questions? Counselor Hurley? Breathe?
I'll, I'll be quick, I'll be quick. No, we, the, the mute, the mutations and the new strains and variants, that's a big concern. Depending what we, it seems. How do we handle that? We know there's been the new strains and the new variants.
Yeah, so, so that's how viruses behave.
Another, that's another issue. And you know, the fact that coronavirus is mutated all the time, we know this. And change their makeup. Just
Yeah. Yeah, so all viruses behave that way. We expect that, like the influenza virus changes uh every year as well. And the thing is that the higher the rates of transmission, the more mutations, the more new variants you're going to see. So one strategy is to drive down rates of transmission. Uh and then another strategy would be to continually update vaccines, like we do with influenza, to deal with any major shifts. Um but so far, um you know, although the vaccine may be less effective in, in certain um uh new variants um in, in protecting against death, so far still very, very effective, you know, protecting against hospitalization. So I, you know, that will be again, an area of ongoing research and updating the vaccines. But the number one strategy is to drive down uh the rates of transmission in the first place.
Okay, that's it for questions? I got one added comment to make. Uh Dr. Williams started, or not, sorry, Andrew. Uh Andrew started out by saying he wanted to thank uh Miriam for all the great work that the Urin Perth uh health unit has done. And I would like to echo that comment on behalf of the County of Perth. But I also want to add one further comment, and I would really like to thank the Perth EMS for everything they've done through this pandemic, not just because I have two of them in the room. But uh they've done a lot of the decanning, they've done some transportation of people from Toronto and out. They've done swabbing, they've done a vaccinating, they've pretty well run the gamut and they've done a great job doing it. So I also ought to pass on praise to them as well.
Here, here.
Agreed. And, and our hospital partners. Fantastic primary care.
Anyway, thank you for your presentation and uh we'll carry on.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, I don't need a motion because that was just a delegation. So we're going to move on to the next item. And that would be corporate services and we have the forestry inspectors report. And Tyler, you're doing that?
Yep. So through the warden, um before council today is the March twenty twenty-one forestry inspector's report provided from Marvin Smith, our forestry inspector. Uh this report uh conducted nine inspections uh for submission of notice of intent. So um just one thing to, to kind of point out, we have had an increase of notice of intents um in relation to last year. So I think that kind of speaks to the efficacy of the, the program. Uh it's nice to see that individuals um are reaching out for the notice of ten as well as the updated information that the information does go to legislative services instead of the planning department. So we've sent information out regarding that. So if there's any questions, happy to take those back to Marvin. Yep.
Okay, questions on the tree inspection report? Not seeing any hands. I have a motion, Perth County receives the March two thousand and twenty-one forestry inspectors report for information. Moved by Counselor Casenberg, second by Counselor Wilhelm. Those in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Um now we're moving on. Paramedic services. And I'm pleased to have Mike and Chris in the room and uh take it away, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Right the other end of the room, so don't worry, we're social distance.
Yes, social distance is in effect. Um thank you through the warden. I appreciate the opportunity to present this report. And we do have uh Deputy Chris Keizer here, who can answer any questions on community paramedics, the mobile integrated health. And we'll be speaking a little bit about that. And um I'm not sure if John McClellan will be entering the room or not, but uh he did co-author the fleet section of this report, so I want to acknowledge that as well. Um so I'll just jump right in. And at the beginning of this report um that you've read is covers uh just some of the COVID nineteen activities that we're doing. And I just thought it would be a good opportunity to refresh and um remind council um what we are doing and, and, and what's new in terms of our response to COVID nineteen. And um you know, in particular, thanks for those kind words, uh warden. And um also like to echo the partnership with both the hospital systems and our local public health, which um we do appreciate every day. Um so the, the main activities that we're doing right now, um we continue to support persons that have COVID nineteen in the home um in our community where we can through our mobile integrated health program. We continue to support the swapping center when um they need staff as required. We continue to support our long-term care and retirement homes and fortunately Unfortunately, um, we haven't been required for some time, uh, because of the good status of our um, LTCs and retirement homes in our community, but we are here to support them if required. We continue to um, support the vaccine center in two, two key roles. One is that we provide uh, paramedics to uh, provide the vaccines, but they also play a dual role. They're wearing two hats when they're there, and the second role is if there's a medical emergency and/or any kind of um, adverse event or anything like that that happens. We're there to take care of the people in our community that are going for vaccines. So our citizens can um, rest assured that um, they will be taken care of by a paramedic if anything were to happen while they're there. Um, and then finally, what is a little bit new and uh, something that was uh, brought up earlier in the delegation is what we call the IMS, which is Innocent Management System Transfers, and that's transferring COVID patients. So the outcome of moving of those patients, of course, requires uh, the involvement of our ambulance services. And to do that effectively, we have uh, created a coalition with Huron, Oxford, Bruce, London Middlesex, Elgin Gray, and then ourselves, um, so that we can staff ambulances in order to uh, move patients between facilities as required. Um, those are extra staffing hours that we're adding at the expense of the province, like so many other things. All of these programs are tracked, and um, we continue to submit through different um, agreements with local system partners, or will continue to submit uh, for reimbursement of um, cost recovery uh, expenses to the province, uh, depending on what the, one of those items were that I, I discussed um, uh, just now. So that's what's going on with uh, some of our uh, COVID nineteen response and our paramedics. And then, of course, our key business in terms of responding to emergencies in our community, we continue to do that. And um, and uh, i- in a way that addresses, of course, uh, um, and under the context of a pandemic. So the second part of this report, um, discussed a fleet review process. So in our business plan for this year, um, we had, and there's John, I can see him on the screen, I wasn't looking up there, hi John. Um, we, uh, John and I partnered and our teams, um, we didn't do all the work certainly, but our teams um, had a look at our business practices with respect to uh, how we manage the fleet. What we found um, uh, from doing this and, and, and how we did it is we uh, we, we had a methodology where we looked at um, if we were to contract some of the fleet services for uh, particular programming, what that would look like in terms of billable hours and in terms of um, expense. And here are some of the things that we found. We found that the billable hours, when we did a study, was similar to what an external vendor. We actually looked at a comparable paramedic service and look, looked at their invoices. And then we blinded any information on them that would pertain to the amount of time it would take to repair them or any costs. And we provided them to our mechanics, and then we came up with uh, numbers that were comparable in terms of the actual billing hours. Um, the second thing that we, we determined was that the mechanical um, rate um, in terms of what our overhead is within the county is competitive. Um, and uh, i- i- is that a ver- is a very competitive rate in terms of what the county is billing paramedic services. Um, then we found that um, some other services uh, within the area have um, some specialized training in terms of the uh, paramedic um, taking care of emergency vehicles, whether it be fire police or ambulants. And that it may be worth taking some courses under the emergency vehicle technician training, uh, certification. That just holds our mechanics to the highest standards when operating um, and, and working on uh, vehicles. And it gives them a little bit of extra technical knowledge when they're dealing with things like what's called the multiplex system, which is an electronic system that uh, helps our emergency license sirens work and, and those types of things. So it just holds them to a high standard. Um, and uh, we did find, however, that um, we can likely find some efficiencies in the uh, fleet tire management program. So I know that some work and progress has already been made on that, um, but uh, that's one of the things that um, we're going to continue to look at um, in terms of managing our fleet and making some changes. So with all of this in mind, um, the, w- we are going to continue to operate on the way that we are, but having said that, um, we're going to also look at the maintenance schedule on ambulances, and um, we're going to do a review on ongoing pricing of parts and consumable fluids, which actually comes at a cost savings when we procure that ourselves as a county. But we're going to um, you know, do a review of that to make sure that we are getting the best cost and uh, continue to look at uh, what our ambulance replacement schedule is. So that's, right now, it's at seven years, and is that the sweet spot? Or is that costing us because of the extra uh, work that we would be doing uh, during that seventh year? And um, with that in mind, that concludes the um, this section of that report. Um, I'm curious if, uh, through the warden, if you want to pause for a moment for questions particular on this, or if we should just finish this and then kind of go back for, because we have community paramedicine next.
Uh, well, maybe just pause for a sec. Any questions with regards to the report that Mike's given to this point? I see Counselor Wilhelm.
Uh, yes, I want to uh, thank John and Mike and the staff for putting this report together. I was pushing for uh, a review like this for quite some time. As um, as a number of years ago, we uh, looked at merging with uh, Huron County EMS. And uh, they do all their service work outsourced by uh, outsourcing it to dealerships. And I'm glad to see that uh, uh, we are uh, saving some money and, and efficient that way with our ambulances. Um, the one thing I, I want to uh, encourage and, and certainly support is increased training over tax and also uh, ensure that we have uh, great documentation as far as uh, with computers, et cetera, that uh, down the road, uh, we can uh, defend ourselves if need be. So uh, congrats on the report and thank you.
Other questions or comments? Not seeing any, back to Mike we go.
Okay, thank you. Uh, through the warden once again, uh, and thank you for those comments, certainly. Uh, Counselor Wilhelm, it was um, um, I know that you were uh, certainly helpful in that process as well. So thank you for your time. Um, as we move forward um, into mobile integrated health, and we have Deputy Chief Chris Kieser here today, who is overseeing the program, so that if there are any questions from council, um, it's a great opportunity for him to answer them. And he will also be sharing some information with you. This also um, loops back to uh, the I thought I had it highlighted, but it loops back to a previous uh, council meeting um, with respect to the um, was the January fourth Keith meeting with respect to a mental health dashboard, and we've uh, have some progress on that as well. So Deputy Chief Kieser will be able to speak to that if there are any questions, and we have brought forward some um, uh, two, two prongs of mental um, health dashboarding. One of them is with respect to our mobile integrated health team, and then the second one is with respect to uh, the emergency calls that we're responding on, and that can certainly help with our planning and programming. But um, if I start um, with our program, uh, this year, we have received sixty-five thousand dollars from Stratford Social Services to apply to our community paramedic program. I think that's a good news story, and um, we're going to be able to uh, directly have an impact on persons that are either at risk of becoming homeless or that are actually homeless themselves, uh, through that funding. And it really just uh, bolsters what we're doing, and it enables us to run, because of what they're doing, enables us to run um, right now, uh, Monday through Sunday, twelve hours a day, and that's a huge, um, we're, we're very grateful for that. The other thing is that the Ministry um, of, of, of Health, the LIN, has uh, extended their high intensity funding, which is related to COVID, uh, to the end of June. Um, so that's a program that um, we had received money from before. And I'm just reporting back that the um, funding uh, continues to the end of June and will be relooked at at some certain point of time. Uh, finally, um, we did um, write a letter to the Ministry of Long-Term Care, asking for consideration um, about uh, some of the other communities that were provided funding um, for community paramedicine. We were not invited to apply to that through the LTC group. Um, so the warden and myself did write a letter just asking for consideration, and we did receive word back that we won't be considered uh, this fiscal year, but there may be opportunities in the future. Um, and from there, I'm going to um, pass the um, virtual microphone over to uh, Deputy Chief Kieser to talk a little bit about um, the program.
Thank you, Chief Adair, Warden, uh, councilors, uh, county leadership, county support staff. Thanks for covering some time out to have me today. Um, for all of you who know me, uh, usually I walk around and talk with my hands quite often, which is, so this is pretty hard for me to sit static in a chair. Uh, for those of you who don't, uh, my name is Chris Kieser, I'm a resident of West Perth, and I've been with the county for about seventeen years. Uh, now I am the Deputy Chief of Program Development, and I oversee the MIH program as well as system performance. Uh, so speaking directly to some of the things that have come up today, um, the social services funding uh, helps us to support the homeless precariously housed, as well as mental health and addictions. Uh, and we work with Andrew and his team, as well as Dr. Clausen and her team, uh, to provide services to those populations. The high intensity funding, uh, that Mike also addressed, uh, we deal with the long-term care of vulnerable populations, as well as those with chronic health conditions, uh, and also support hospital discharge patients to help Andrew and his team, uh, clear up beds to allow for treatment during COVID. Uh, just as a little bit more, you'll see on the report Mike prepared, there are four items that I'll talk to. Uh, and this is in response to looking for some support for mental health patients within the communities of Perth County, as well as developing dashboards that allow us to report on that. We've done quite a bit of work with our vendor, uh, to make sure that we're capturing the things that we need to know. One, to make our system better, and two, to actually report back on what it is we're actually doing and the work that uh, that is going on. Um, so I also want to thank uh, everyone in this room and council's support for this program. We've done a lot since March of twenty twenty, uh, and it's been very successful from the feedback we've gotten, not only locally, from the clients, from our stakeholders, but also more uh, regionally as it spreads out. Uh, you'll notice that in the report, there is four charts. This is straight from our mental health dashboard, if you have it. One, it talks about the populations that we're supporting through our mobile integrated health program. You'll see that seventeen percent of the, the people we are supporting do have a primary diagnosis of mental health. Um, those individuals, uh, left side lower graph, uh, actually require quite a bit more um, interventions from a community paramedic perspective, uh, than many of the other populations that we support. And I, I would imagine anybody who has known anyone with uh, a mental health um, condition or depression or anxiety realizes that. You know, it takes quite a bit to help people out of some of those places, so we do spend quite a bit of time. Uh, you'll see that in the top right-hand corner, our distribution, uh, one thing we like to make sure that we always do is support everyone within the communities that are all of Perth County. Um, you'll see that uh, a lot of our clients do, um, about fifty percent of the mental health clients are in Stratford, and this is just population-based, um, but there is a small pie off to the side that's yellow that says thirteen percent. Uh, what that means is it's not associated with the city or a town, so these are strictly rural um, individuals within our county that uh, we support, um, to connect them to the proper mental health resources. Uh, the other graph is somewhat self-explanatory, it's just a little representation of what we're actually doing uh, with those who require mental health support in their home. And uh, with that, um, I won't take up too much more of your time. Um, there's a lot that I can tell you through the data that we do capture. So if anyone does have any questions, um, both operationally as well as in our community programs, I'm more than happy to uh, to collect that for you and report back, and I'm also open to taking any questions.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Uh, questions for Chris? Counselor Casenberg?
Uh, not questions, uh, Warden, so much as compliments. Um, I think that uh, getting these slices of data and, and creating this dashboard is an amazing leap forward. And uh, I tip my hat to your efforts on this, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Hurley?
No, I uh, always like to see them, even in mental health, and it's nice to see. Yeah, we all have our OPP reports, and yeah, it's, it's up and it's going to stay up.
Other questions or comments? Not seeing any hands going up. Yeah, actually, I think it's great what you're doing there, Mike and Chris, Chris being the lead.
Yeah.
So Mike did mention we tried to secure some funding to really enhance this program. We fell a little bit short, although I have been advocating for it ever since, and that was what, two, three months ago we sent that in? Roughly?
Maybe last, but yeah, something like that.
Yeah, it could be last, time flies when you're having fun.
Yeah.
I have meetings quite often on Fridays with a bunch of cabinet ministers and MPPs and MPs, and I keep pushing for this funding. And the one thing I know for sure at this point in time, the province has actually paused funding for that because they're doing a complete overview of the paramedicine program. So I'm sure when they finish that, I'm going to be one of the first ones to find out from either uh, Minister Walker or Minister Thompson. I'm pretty sure of that, I'm, I'm hoping that anyway, because we do speak quite regularly. So anyway, it'd be nice to get a bit more funding and really blow it up. I actually have Dufferin's Warden, they have a huge program up there in Dufferin County and Chatham, Kent as well. So we're using leverages from other municipalities that already have a good program to help try and expand our program at this point, and hopefully we'll get more funding. Okay, any other comments or questions on that? Uh, Chris?
I may, Warden, Aitchison, thank you very much, uh, Warden, thank you very much, Counselor Casenberg, Counselor Hurley. It's, uh, thank you for your brief.
Okay, I have a motion, Perth County Council receives a parame- paramedic services update report for information. Moved by Counselor Wilhelm, second by Counselor McKenzie. Those in favor? Carrie, okay, moving on. Next, we have Public Works, and we have some tender results, and I see John, and I think maybe Mr. Wilson's is, Mr. Wilson going to take this, John? Oh, there's Bill's name, if we can get Bill in here, we're good. Morning, Bill?
Yes, I know. Morning, and council. Um, I have a couple reports here today on tender results. Um, the first one being the line painting tender. Historically, this work, as you all are aware, was uh, was completed in-house with our own inter- internal equipment and employees. Um, however, we were looking to go out to tender on this to, to involve a third-party contractor to complete this work. Uh, that was presented to council during budget time, so our budget reflects that as well. Um, so we had issued a tender, um, and included the work, um, that we had historically done for some of our partner municipalities, being the Town of St. Mary's, um, Township of Perth South and the municipalities of West and North Perth. The low bid on this tender was provincial road markings, um, they're out of Guelph. And they have done work in the uh, in the region of us, um, city of Stratford, Wellington County, and region of Waterloo, uh, were a, a couple of the references that they had provided, uh, which they had previously worked for. Um, their bid submission was one hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, which is within uh, the budget for this item, which was set at one hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Um, of that, there's about twelve thousand dollars that would be Um of that, there's about twelve thousand dollars that would be uh work that would be completed for the uh partner municipalities. Uh under this contract. And I guess the only other thing to add here is their unit rates for this um are only slightly higher than what um. What the county had paid in previous years um in twenty twenty for the material alone. And it it is coming from the same supplier as as what we had purchased uh when we were doing the work internally. Uh last year was four dollars and fifty-three cents is what we purchased per liter for the paint. And the all-in unit price um for the supply and application through provincial road markings. Is four dollars and thirty-seven for thirty-seven cents for white paint and four dollars and seventy cents for the yellow. So. Pretty close to the material cost of what we were previously playing, um except for they're going to be applying the the product. Just one thing to note is that this is a one-year contract. However, there is um some clauses within the. Tender document that would allow us to um negotiate a contract extension, provided um works satisfactory. Um with regards to the workmanship and the the contract execution. So if there's any questions.
Thanks, Bill. Questions for Bill on that uh tender? Not seeing any hands going up. I have a motion here. The Perth County Council. Receives attended results two thousand and twenty-one oh three one dash oh eight, supply and apply linear traffic markings. Report for information and that Perth County Council Award Tender two thousand and twenty-one oh three eight dash oh eight. To Provincial Road Markings Inc. for the tender price of one hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Excluding HST. And that council approved by law three eight two zero dash two oh two one, being a bylaw to authorize the entering. Into an execution of an agreement between the Corporation of the County of Perth and Provincial Road Markings. Moved by Counselor Duncan, or Counselor Calum, sorry, seconded by. Counselor Agats. Uh questions? Those in favor? Carrie, very good. Carry on, Bill. You got another one here?
Yes, thank you. Um this other report is a report prepared for information for council regarding um. A tender that was um issued for the supply of. Uh it was actually three pickup trucks. Perth South had two um the county ourselves with one three-quarter ton truck. Um Finch Auto Group out of London was a low bid on a tender. Um. I don't have the number of submissions that we had in in front of me, but I believe that's that information's within the report there. Um the low price was forty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars, which is within our budget of forty-five thousand. And with respect to the county procurement policy, um given the value of this um this purchase, the uh. It can be approved through the CIO's office, so that is a route that we've taken for this purchase. So this is a report for council's information.
Thanks, Bill. Uh six submissions, actually, Bill. For our tendering. Uh questions or comments for Bill on that report? Counselor Agats.
I'm just wondering what truck are we getting? Dodge, Ford, GM?
Yeah, that's a Chevy Silver. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the tender results two thousand and twenty-one dash oh three three dash oh seven. Supply a pickup truck report for information. Moved by. Counselor Duncan, second by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Thanks, John and Bill.
Thank you.
And I believe we're done with those, so next. Well, council reports. Do I have anything on your council reports? Not. The phases keep moving around on me up there. I'm struggling to keep track of them all. Uh I don't see any hands going up for council reports. Uh moving on. We have bylaws and we have bylaw three eight two zero dash two oh two one. Be read a first, second, and third time and passed this sixth day of May, two thousand and twenty-one. And that was the bylaw for. The tender we just discussed. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by. Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by. Counselor Agats. Those in favor? Carrie. Okay. We're at notice of motions. Oh, sorry, we do have the CEMC bylaws been pushed in here. Um but pushed in, it's, we need to get it done. Okay, bylaw three eight two two dash two oh two one. Be read a first, second, and third time and finally pass the sixth day of May, two thousand and twenty-one, and that is to. Put David Clark on the books and take uh our previous one off. Move by. Counselor Kastenberg, second by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? That is carried. Moving on. Now we have notice of motions. And we had a notice of motion presented by Counselor Herlick. And I had a copy of it here someplace. Here it goes. Now, um.
We will.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna put that notice of motion on the screen. And. Then in order to discuss it, we'll need a mover and a seconder. But we'll put it up on the screen just for a quick refresher for you. Just takes a couple of sex here technically. Okay, there we go. There's the notice of motion. So uh this has been uh brought forward by Counselor Herlick. COVID nineteen, new target approach. And I'll just let you a quick scan through it. And I will let you speak to it today, Daryl. Seeing as it's now official. So if you want to speak to it just briefly, because I'll need a seconder to really have a full discussion.
Yeah, no, great, thanks. Yeah, it's it's a no secret. I've had my concerns with. The whole approach around COVID nineteen and the lockdown methodology, as council has to, we've set some motions for it as well. I'm not blowing on that, and it's, yeah, interesting times. It's very interesting. I'm growing up in the independent meat business. I'd like to tell counsel here, there's nobody can smell when the government's up with something like myself. I watched probably five thousand independent meat chops close in ten years in Ontario. I haven't enough for this kind of stuff. I don't see what's going on in home in Norfolk right now. It's absolutely disgusting. Their story around when we open from their medical officer of health is a hundred percent different than what we're getting here. They're getting lawyers involved, false PCR tests. In my mind, the PCR test is the biggest fraud in humanity, and I have officers and lawyers who will agree with me on that. Um it's interesting times. We're systematically bankrupting society. You don't think so? They call me all the time because I know where I stand on it. I could sit here all day. We're not going to. Um it's a huge violation of our charter of rights, bill of rights, if you would, the Nuremberg Code. Um family and friends who fought wars for this kind of madness. So. Like I said, I could sit here all day if it's my officers that are speaking up daily, but I need to be somewhere for the constitutional. Constitution courts now, which is very beautiful, so I'm good.
Daryl, so at this point in time, are you moving this notice of motion?
You know what? I'm sure there's not going to be much debate. Maybe there is, maybe there isn't. I'm gonna move it.
Well, can't have any debate if we don't get it on the floor, so I need a mover and a seconder, so.
Yes.
Okay, so does anybody second that motion? Uh we see Counselor uh I as a seconder. Okay, discussion or comments or whatever. Counselor Wright?
Well, so I don't think it's quite as in-depth as what Daryl said, what the motion is. The motion says we send this to Randy Pettapiece. And and it's exactly like we used to be when some were green, some were gray, some were red, some were yellow. That's what. That's what I read into this. We're not, I'm not talking about constitutional rights and that. This motion says we ask the provincial government. To to uh open at different rates. That's what I'm asking. That's why I seconded, because I wanted to get it out and ask the question.
Okay, so towards the very end of that motion, it does say that council of Perth County recommend a new target approach be taken. Regarding COVID nineteen and lockdowns and.
Ri- right, and I mean, it next week or on the twentieth. Appeal might stay in the red and we might get to go to yellow or green or orange or blue, or I don't even know the colors anymore. But but that's what we're just suggesting to the province is that when it opens up again, it can be the exact same as it was before. Bruce County, Bruce County was in green before the whole lockdown. That's what we're talking about.
In a half later.
Yeah.
Uh so this actually doesn't say anything to do with colors. This is to end the lockdown, this notice of motion, if I read that correctly. Uh other comments? Counselor Agats.
Well, we just had Miriam and uh Andrew on as a delegation and in Perth East. We are following the guidelines of the the health unit and and what the medical people are saying, so. Unfortunately, I cannot support Daryl's uh motion because of that.
I see another hand up there. Counselor Wilhelm.
Um, yes, I agree with the. Counselor Agats that uh I I would certainly support a targeted approach, but I will not support. The lockdown and um this, this is a pandemic. Uh it's overwhelming our our hospitals and just to strictly end it, um I'm sorry, I can't support that.
Other comments? Counselor Herlick's got his hand up again.
I'll just make it quick and easy. I guess as we go forward, we're going to see what the courts say. That's what it's going to end up. And we'll we'll see how overwhelmed we really were.
Okay, thanks, Daryl. Last chance for comment on this notice of motion. So you had the motion put before you. It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor of that motion, raise your hand. Well, that fails, so it won't be proceeding any further. Thank you. Uh and we'll move on. Okay. Next, other business. Counselor Wright?
Jim, I had or counter, Warden, I had a, I've I've been thinking here since Miriam started talking, and at the end she was done. And said, um, we're gonna need a booster vaccine or or vaccines. I I don't think I can bring this up, but I was wondering if we can start to get something in process to go to Pettapiece and and Nader. That maybe we should start relying on ourselves to produce some of these vaccines. And and get the government, if if it's something we're gonna need, why would we rely on India? Or Russia or China for this? And I don't know if we can even send a letter to our our provincial and federal MPP. Do I have to bring it as a notice of motion to to talk about it? Staff direction?
I'm, what do you think?
Yeah, yeah, we're thinking maybe we need a notice notice of motion.
I'll bring it next, I'll bring it next time.
brought forward by staff, and then we can make a motion. We're gonna draft the notice of motion for you.
Okay, thank you. I just think we should be relying on ourselves a little more than everybody else.
Okay, and to your point, there was a company trying to develop a vaccine, and they announced this last week that they're out of the game. Because they got no support from the federal government. And I can't remember the name of the company. Counselor Kastenberg.
If I might suggest in considering a draft of a notice of motion uh collaboratively here, uh perhaps we should be talking about. Uh domestic vaccine vaccine capacity and um and that we would encourage other levels of government to. Engage on this matter and perhaps to direct support there.
Okay, that's duly noted. Other comments or questions? So anything else under other business? Not seeing any hands. We'll move on to announcements. Does anybody have any announcements? Counselor Kastenberg.
Well, I'm strangely proud of the sign wars movement that uh has emerged in Perth County and uh that was uh stimulated by businesses and listual. Uh I hope all of you have taken note of it and um and certainly we're seeing interesting migration. Uh and pickup in other parts of Canada. Uh we're also noticing some global media attention for North Perth and Perth County, and so I'm. I'm pleased to uh be a a cheerleader on the sidelines of that particular initiative. I'm. The trusting, as I've said in North Perth Council, that um that as our sign wars evolve or spread. Uh that we will maintain a certain degree of decorum and and a little bit of PG uh rating would be helpful as well. But generally, I'm I'm enjoying seeing the fun and the creativity, and I hope that uh your communities where they've been picked up. Uh fellow colleagues um are also enjoying and and the experience. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other things for announcements? And just so county council is aware, uh our fine people in municipality of West Perth. Kind of started there at the end of last week and posted something about they thought the West was best. So Perth South on Facebook here early in the week, they supposed, you may think you're the best, but we know everybody wants to go south. So uh just thought we'd uh bring that up to your attention today. Anyway, anything else?
I need to say that.
Mr. Warden, true north, strong and free.
Very good. I have an act, uh speaking to your uh bit about the coverage, you went to CBC. Uh news website, you can pick up a lot of those on one of their articles. That's where I seen most of your posts of North Perth. Okay. That's it for announcements. We're gonna move on to closed session. And I need a motion to move into closed session at. Got to find a phone here. Ten twenty-nine. In accordance with section two thirty-nine of the municipal act. Two thousand and one, to consider three separate items retaining pertaining to. Labor relations and negotiations. Moved by. Counselor McDermott, second by Counselor Wilhelm. Those in favor? We're in closed session, so you're gonna have to, we'll take a five minute break. Because we have to do some technical stuff and we're gonna bring in a couple of individuals, so. Five minutes.
Jim, hey, uh as you all know, my mother passed here, so we're going through quite a bit. I'm gonna skip out on closed session, so that's okay.
Actually, I was gonna bring that up before the meeting ended, Daryl. Uh apologize for not getting to it already. But for all of Perth County Council, Daryl's mother did pass away. Couple nights ago, and on behalf of county council and staff, we offer you our most sincere condolences to you and your family.
So I'm gonna be taken off here.
Okay.
Thank you. Cheers.
Okay, five minute break. Warden, just not live streaming. It will be live streamed once we're done. So I have a motion that bylaw three eight two one dash two oh two one be a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the Corporation of County Perth and its regular meeting, May sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Is read a first, second and third time and finally pass May sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Moved by Counselor Kastenberg, seconded by Counselor Duncan. Those in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. And one thing we have left to do is a motion to adjourn the meeting at eleven thirteen. Moved by Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Wilhelm. Those in favor? It's carried. Thank you very much.